Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Before we do anything, a little announcement. We're having, the Internet's been down all day, so we have no visual tonight, so we're gonna have, you have the packet in front of you on your laptop, but there will be nothing presented up on the screen, so it'll be very old school, you know, back to, let's go back to what, 2010. And so, it is being recorded, though. We are asked tonight, though, that we're also trying to do an audio recording, that when there's a motion made, and second, that it's, you know, just state your name, so that we can get the meeting minutes done. There's been staffing issues. You get those all typed up, so if we can help them out in any way, great. So with that, we'll do the roll call.
Oh, I get to do that, don't I? I forgot. Commissioner Larson?
Present.
Commissioner Steeler?
Present.
Commissioner Law, Young, Long?
Here.
Excuse me. Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Chair Gerard?
Here.
Thank you.
We ask you available, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Kevin Miller, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Don Steeler, seconding the motion.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have one item on there, the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 13th, 2023. Do I have a motion to either approve it, or if anybody wants anything pulled?
I'll just approve the agenda.
And I have a motion to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
Consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, hold on.
Second by Justin.
Thank you. I'm good, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Don Steeler will abstain, because I was absent.
Okay, very good.
And we missed you.
Thanks.
We have, we'll move to item six, our regular agenda. It's an action item. It's consideration of resolution number 11-08-23-01, a site plan approval for PGA Investments LLC on Forest Road North. The PID is 20-032-21-12-0011. Ken, since you're the only one over there, I assume you're presenting?
You are correct, Mr. Chair, and just also, we're not, because we have no Internet, we have no YouTube broadcast going live, but I don't know, through the Cable Commission, they'll be able to repeat the recording later, but we're not live, so there'll be no one looking to comment through YouTube, because...
Oh, okay, so it'll be, if you're not in the room...
We can't hear you.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that, and this...
This is being recorded by audio?
Well, and video.
Well, yeah, it's being recorded. We can't get it out of here, with the Internet being down.
Our Internet's been down since 10:15. Cable cut, cut.
You're bad.
It's not just, it's City Hall thing, as far as we know. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you introduced, we have a site plan designer approval request for you this evening. The applicant is Mr. Peter Olson, and it's for a 3.62-acre property on the corner of Highway 97 and Forest Road. He is proposing to develop the site with an industrial office warehouse facility. Again, normally, I would put up the maps, but it's the southwest corner of the intersection, just north of the Interstate Properties complex. The site would have about a 9,000-square-foot building, could, that could be divided into one to three users, depending on the market and the need. The site plan is also showing the potential for a second building pad in the future. That is not part of this request, however, but it's, just wanted to note that. So he did, Mr. Olson, submitted all the materials for the design approval, and that's what we'll talk about this evening. Zoning-wise, the zoning there is industrial. Our I District and this use for multi-tenant office warehouse structure is a permitted use in that district. So we're looking primarily this evening at design elements and how those would fit. Going through the report, it'll give a high overview of the exterior of the building. Would the exterior finishes and the accent materials meet our standards for commercial industrial buildings such as this is proposed? And I should note, in the report, in the attachments, towards the end of the attachments, there's pictures of, a couple of pictures of buildings. Those aren't exactly how this building will look, but they're just included as samples or examples, just to give you a feel of what the building will look like. There are the architectural drawings as well, in the materials. The building, as far as the site plan, would be located near the northeast corner of the property, with meeting all the setbacks that are required. The, all the design, excuse me, setback and lot size standards and impervious surface standards are all met with the proposed site plan. No issues with any of those. I looked at the parking requirements, and for an office warehouse building like this of about 9,000 square feet, they would need nine stalls, and they are showing nine parking stalls on the site along the west side of the building. Again, the site plan with all the setbacks for both parking in the building meet all our setback requirements. They're, the way the applicant designed the site, the driveway for it comes in towards the south property line near the Interstate Facility, and then the building is set north of that, with some parking in between and door docks on the south side of the building. They have kept the building as close to Forest Road and Highway 97 as they could, and that is minimizing the amount of tree removal that this project will cause, and I'll touch on that a little later. So because of that, we did not, as a city, require a detailed tree survey. They did submit a preliminary landscape plan, and that's worth a bit of discussion. As I think the commission's well aware, we see the standard in almost all our reports. We base the amount of landscaping based on the perimeter of the site in linear feet. As staff estimated it, the site perimeter is about 1,694 feet, going off of the certificate of survey. The project designer used a calculation of 1,520 feet, and where that came from is the amount of the project site or the property that this project would be using. And the reason for the discrepancy primarily is, if you look at the site plan, they've kept all their improvements to the south and kept a big chunk of land along Highway 97 basically untouched, you know? And the reason for that has been done, as indicated, for their Highway 97 reconstruction project, that they will need land on that corner, probably for stormwater ponding, and I included a concept plan in your materials of what they knew they would need for ponding as of three or four months ago. When this application came in, I sent them the latest plans. They said they're working on updating their stormwater needs, and they couldn't, they didn't have one ready for tonight's meeting, unfortunately, but it looks like, from everything I've been able to gather, that almost all of the northern part of this lot, immediately adjacent to Highway 97, will end up in stormwater ponding. That unfortunately will take out all the trees on the site, or most of them, and then shrinks the amount of buildable property that this project will go on. So with all that, doing a site calculation, a perimeter calculation of 1,520 feet, as I outlined on page four, to staff is an acceptable number to go by, again, because we know the impact of Highway 97 will be coming. And with that, then we did the calculations of how many trees and shrubs would need to be planted to meet that standard. Their preliminary plan showed, I didn't write, I didn't include the numbers, I think about 104, or, excuse me, about 48 trees, I think they were showing, so it's a little less than what we have in the table on the top of page four. And because of the uncertainty of what Mindot's going to need, and the building may have to shift around even a little bit more, I've included a condition that the, in the resolution, in the conditions, that see staff will work with the applicant to maximize the amount of tree planting on the site that's reasonable and works for both Mindot and the applicant. We, we can't have the applicant, if they want to proceed, say, next year, planting a bunch of trees along Highway 97 that the state's gonna come along and take out. That doesn't work for anybody. But we don't know the exact limits of what Mindot's going to need yet, so rather than make them come back and go through another review, because something might change, we're asking to leave it in staff's hands to work out the final landscape plan. For lighting on the exterior, they're showing nine wall pack LEDs fixtures on the exterior of the building. No freestanding light fixtures or light poles, and those wall packs should meet our standards for lighting on a site. Not concerned about that. They are proposing a dumpster enclosure on the east side of the building. We have in here our standard condition about materials matching the building and being of a style that's compatible with a gate that's not chain link fence, like some have tried to do in the past on other sites. There, again, I touched on, they're showing an access driveway near the south property line that connect up to Forest Road, and that's the best place for the driveway, and it's farthest away from the intersection, and meets all our standards for a driveway for a commercial site like this. They are also showing six-foot-tall black vinyl chain link fencing along the south property line. It would be an extension off of what Interstate has on their site, and then turning and running north along Forest Road with a gate across their driveway, and then back to their proposed building, primarily for security, which makes sense. The only condition and concern we have about that is if need be, the fire chief wants to be able to have access to the property, get in case of an emergency, so we'll have to work out the details of, is there a key code? Is there a padlock? Is there, how that's gonna, access is gonna be provided, is another condition. The city engineer reviewed their plans. We provided the staff, and the applicant, and I provided them with comments that we'll have to work through. A lot of it revolves around utilities, because their current plan shows sewer and water lines running around the north side of the proposed building to get to the second building pad site. Those lines, as proposed, may run into or be in the area that Mindot will need. Again, we don't know where that final line is, so they'll have to work through some final design, where to put those utility lines, and we're, I think, it's staff's opinion, I think the applicants, that it will be clearly easier to put those in, those lines in with their first phase, rather than having to tear up a parking lot or tear up landscaping and put them in later. So it's one of those details that has to be worked out. Again, I touched on, one of the comments of the fire chief is about the gate. The second thing is, he's requiring a fire hydrant be added, either on the west side of Forest Road or internal to the site. He told me there is some benefit to having the fire hydrant internal to the site, because if the fire hydrant's out along the road, the trucks are stopped on the road, if there's hoses laying on the road, it may block traffic. Where the hydrant's internal to the site, get through the gate, and have less impact on the road. But wherever they work it out, it's, again, it'll be a condition of approval by the chief. Watershed District has reviewed the plans. Again, they're somewhat preliminary, because with a little bit of the chicken, the egg with the Mindot uncertainty. They're generally compliant with the district requirements, although there's some final details to work out with hydrology. There is a small wetland on the site, and they want to make sure that the wetland impacts are minimized or compliant with what's needed for the hydrology of the wetland. I included, bottom of page five and top of page six, a summary of the Mindot comments. Again, they are now scheduling the reconstruction of 97 from Forest Road, or actually, the roundabout all the way out to Hornsby by the Love's Truck Stop for years '25, '26. We don't know how they're gonna stage it or phase it exactly, but again, they've indicated they're probably going to need to, or most certainly going to need stormwater ponding at this intersection affecting this property, and hopefully sooner than later, we will know where those limits are, so then the applicant will know, and they can do their final project design. Any impacts to the right-of-way or the drains will require Mindot approval and permitting. Applicant's aware of that as well. Just what I, just so you all know what I hear, is that, again, the 97 project will be a two-year reconstruction. They may end up having to shut down completely the west end, as it goes out to Hornsby, because the soils are so bad, that they may have to take out 15 or 20 feet of muck, and there's no way to keep one lane of traffic in, or even a temporary road, when you're mucking out all that. That's what we hear. We don't know for sure. But if they want, as I understand, if they want to build it in '25, '26, they gotta get the plans done probably by January, put it off for bids in April, and get it lined up for them, so we'll know pretty soon how they're going to do it. So we'll see. That'll be exciting, challenging, but necessary. Page six, I go through our site plan considerations that are in our zoning code for projects such as this, and in summary, it will meet all our standards. So finally, to the recommendation, which starts on page seven of the report, staff is recommending approval of the project with adoption of the resolution, as the chair indicated, resolution 11082301, and that's subject to the 18 conditions, which are included in the resolution. Couple of highlights from those conditions. Number two, that we, all the final plans need review and approval by the city engineer, public works director, Mindot, the Watershed District, all the usual groups that we need. This approval does not include an approval for a future Phase Two of the projects, which may, at some point down the line, add a second building. Again, needing all those permits. If the applicant desires to install a driveway, we'll have to work out a driveway permit or agreement, yet this fall before a site improvement agreement is put in place by the city council. Again, touching on, we'll need a final landscape plan that best fits the intent of the city requirements, while not negatively impacting the needs or the requirements of Mindot or the Watershed District. And then the final plans will have to accommodate any of the changes required by Mindot, to ensure that no project rating or improvements with the development are outside of the construction limits, and so they will not impact the construction limits Mindot identifies as necessary. For the road reconstruction, again, fire chief will have final say on the fire hydrant location, and working through the access with the gate by whatever means is determined necessary by the fire chief. With that, I will stop. Mr. Olson, our applicant, is here this evening as well to answer questions.
Commissioners, questions to staff? Excuse me. Ms. Young?
Susan Young, couple of questions. One, at various points, Mindot has indicated that they would make Forest Road right in, right out. Have they given us any further information about that?
Last I heard, that is still true.
Okay. Interstate has had, their agreement originally years ago was they would be right in, right out, and that doesn't happen, and that close to the roundabout. A lot of additional contractor vehicles, contractor vehicles having trailers is gonna be a serious problem. What is the city's position on outside storage of equipment? Again, if they're targeting contractors, and the ones that were listed in here, hauling, paving, landscape companies, siding, most of those folks would have outside storage of their trailers and equipment. How, what is, what is the zoning code for this designation on outside storage?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the way we are approaching it, the primary use is the building and the uses in the building. Outside storage of trucks and equipment that are associated with the renters or users in the building will be fine. It's, we don't want material storage, like Interstate has. We're not considering a contractor's yard, because there'll be more than one user here, and we do have some screening requirements, which along Forest Road with the landscape plan, which, again, I can put up, they should be able to meet that. So it's, what we're envisioning, and I'll let the applicant address this further, is more, well, yeah, potentially a small contractor, like a HVAC company, or maybe a landscaper, but the primary focus is the building and their office space. Maybe they park a truck or two outside, and that overflow area, what I would call it to the west, is intended for a second pad, or it is a second building pad potentially. There's not really enough parking designed on the site for a bunch of rent or tenants' equipment to sit outside, so some of that'll have to be addressed by the owner as well, as tenants come in and how they use the site.
As one drives around Forest Lake and sees the roofing companies, the hauling companies, the landscape companies, the tree removal companies, the roofing companies that we have, that are home-based businesses, their outside storage is significant, and I don't see how... I'll look forward to a better understanding at, a little bit later, how you plan on making sure that doesn't happen.
Kevin Miller, I'm slightly confused, and maybe you can clear this up, Mr. Roberts. Why is this coming to us as a resolution versus a conditional use permit or something like that?
Well, first of all, we're doing, we, as a staff, are trying to do resolutions for any action the commission takes, so it's in the record. Not just an approval in the minutes, but you're adopting a resolution. It's something Abby wanted to put in place, just...
Can you explain further what you mean by that?
Rather, if we didn't do a resolution, it'd be, you'd make a recommendation to approve it, subject to all these conditions. Now, when we get a resolution, you're doing the same conditions, and then the resolution gets recorded against the property. So it's in the property record for future planners or property owners, if they do their title search, they hopefully find a copy of the resolution and all the conditions that were put in place when a project was approved. It doesn't need a conditional use permit, because the uses proposed are permitted uses. They're not a conditional use.
Okay, so if it's a resolution, then, just so I'm clear, they'll run with the property, and if they aren't abiding by those resolutions, what would happen?
I gotta change what I think you're saying. If they're not following the conditions of approval?
Yes, sorry.
Then we have to go back to the owner and say, here's the resolution, condition 16 said this, and we're seeing this. You either have to come in and try to get the city to revise your approval, approve an amendment, or change what you're doing, how you're operating, however it is, what the activity's going on the site, because it does not meet the conditions.
Yeah, I apologize. It's the first, in all the years, it's the first resolution, I think, that I remember addressing this way for a project as a resolution.
We've had a couple more recently, and it has concerned me, but I was trying to, trying to be quiet.
So maybe to clear it up, if it didn't come through us as a resolution, what would we call it?
You'd just be, you'd be, you would be making a motion to approve, subject to whatever conditions are in the staff report.
Okay.
But now, it's, you're making a motion to adopt a resolution, which has those same conditions. The advantage of the resolution is it gets recorded.
That's what I was wondering. What's the advantage? Okay.
Other questions, staff?
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Do you feel that a resolution gives you better enforcement opportunities? We have had conditional use permits, which the city has said the conditions are unenforceable. I think the planning commission can think of a couple of properties that are poster children for that. Would the resolution make the conditions of the resolution more enforceable?
I think in part, yes, because what, if it gets recorded, and that's what we do with resolutions for any project, it's in the property record. So if somebody does their due diligence, buys a property five, 10, 15 years from now, there's a resolution, here's what was approved in 2023, or whatever year it is, rather than having to find old planning commission minutes, or finding a particular project file, which may or may not have everything in it. The goal with the resolution is, there's a record for anybody that does property title searches, finds the resolution, I record it against that specific property, and we're hoping, then, it leaves a better, clearer trail and documentation of what was approved, rather than trying to find old staff reports and old minutes that may or may not be as easy to find.
Quick follow-up, and then, so resolutions are enforceable for the life of the property? The resolutions run with the property?
Correct.
Commissioner Miller?
No, I don't think I have another question.
Hi. Moving on from resolutions, let's talk a little bit about the fence.
Okay.
I just wanna confirm that it looks like that fence is, I'm not exactly sure where fences can go on in the industrial district. I'm not opposed to the fence, but I, but I don't want to have the issue we had on 15th last year, where that fence was. So we're good having it, as long as it's within the setback, we're good. He can extend it past his building if he wants to. He can do whatever he wants. It can be six feet tall. It just has to be within the setback.
And to be clear, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it has to be entirely on the private property, not in the public right-of-way, not in the public easement, and, again, I'm going by memory, the site plan, where the fence is going to go will be, have extensive landscaping as well. It'll be almost, the landscaping will help, I won't say hide it, but it'll help screen the parking area and blend, and the fence should blend in with the landscaping at the same time.
And then it's a budding another fence on the south side. I assume Interstate must have a fence there?
Yep. Interstate has a fence that comes partway to Forest Road, but not as far east, and they would take off from that, go east to Forest Road or to the right-of-way, and turn, go across their driveway up towards the new building, and it can...
It looks like it's about halfway up the building where the dumpster's gonna be in.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. As long as it's, as long as it's good, we're good.
Yep.
And my last question really has to do with parking. It seems that nine might be the calculation, but just by the letter alone, it seems like we could have more. How do we handle that? Because we have a requirement, he would meet the requirement, but we also, you need to, you can't really be parking on the grass, right?
And they can't park on Forest Road.
Right.
So it, it really becomes, in my opinion, internal operational management. How do they manage their site, so that things don't go crazy?
I got you. I just wanted to make sure.
But you're right. The landscaping is supposed to be kept green and not become overflow parking.
And this was Commissioner Gerard. Commissioner Kev?
Kevin Miller, Ken. So, I'm sorry I have to go back to this, but, so, the resolutions, I understand, but conditions, for example, the parking, I don't, you know, the, the equipment, outside storage, that sort of stuff. I don't see any of that addressed in this. So does that mean, basically, they can do what they want?
Commissioners, no. For example, if they wanted to start hauling in a bunch of lumber and having it as a lumberyard, no, because that's not a outdoor, it's not permitted to have an outdoor sales or storage yard for materials. The intent, again, based on what the applicant's told me, is for their equipment for the people leasing the office for the people leasing the office space. It might be vans that come and go every day, work trucks. And if it's, especially trucks or pickups or vans that come and go every day, that's just parking their vehicles outside. It's a little bit of a gray area, I don't, and the other thing, it's a multi-use building or multi-tenant building. It's not one contractor, like Interstate, doing their whole thing.
But, but potentially, it could be.
Potentially.
And so if, if it was a company like, let's just say Interstate, or an HVAC company or a plumbing company, they could have 20, 30, 40 vehicles, and if they could figure out how to park them, they could do them, if they have equipment for all those vehicles, ladders, chainsaws, cranes, whatever it might be, let's say it's a...
Cherry pickers.
Yeah, cherry pickers, they, they could have all that parked there. And then, if they have a repair shop, they could repair vehicles there and change oil and all that sort of stuff.
If they could fit everything under that?
But they would have the right to do that, because it doesn't say in these resolutions anything about not being able to do that.
Correct. Well, there are some limits to the zoning code, and I apologize, I can't look it up because I don't... But, and, so for example, if they wanted to change the oil on their own vehicles in their garage shop, fine. And auto repair is actually a permitted use in that district. But now we get into, how much parking do you need for an auto repair versus, because now you have to have room for employees, you have to have room for customers, you have to have room for the customer cars.
But at this point, we have no idea what the use is gonna be.
Not exactly, no. But other than what the applicant indicated in their letter.
Any other questions, staff? Hearing none, we invite the applicant, if you wish, come up, say a few words. We ask, you state your name and address just for the record, spend a couple of minutes, giving us your thoughts on what you've heard here, and then we may have a few questions for you. So welcome to the planning commission.
Thanks, commissioners. Nice to see you all, and Ken. I'm Peter Olson. I am the owner of PGA Investments. I live at 1345 Hunter's Ridge in Lionel Lakes. Bought the property a little bit over a year ago, and as I started with my survey and wetland delineation, came into the city with a general contractor and kind of proposed the concept of the type of use I was thinking when I purchased the property. Seemed like that was fitting with the zoning of the city and in that area, being industrial. I've had a lot of interest in, in buildings like these over the years, I've observed them, I've seen businesses come and go. There's many, many hundred thousand square foot buildings out there nowadays, but there's not a lot of smaller, you know, less than 10,000 square foot spaces available. Commissioner Young, you talked about small businesses being at their home and having all of this stuff sitting everywhere, and that's exactly the reason for this type of building, because ideally, if their business is doing well, they'd like to have that stuff inside and in the wintertime, out of the elements, and maybe be able to do some minor maintenance or whatnot. So, you know, this is really targeting small contractors that ideally don't wanna continue working out of their home, they wanna get their own small office space, or maybe still have their home office, but have a space to keep their work, vehicles and tools away from their home. The fencing is something we discussed quite a bit. I initially proposed privacy slats, and through conversations, we decided utilizing the required landscaping to screen the property, and a darker fence would be a, a better visual appearance for that corner of Forest Lake. I was all in favor of that, I think the trees would do a great job in conjunction with the fence, and, and it is primarily for privacy. The parking spaces, as you discussed, if they are, there could potentially be the, more than nine people coming and going. And there is space, if you look at the entrance, where it comes around the corner to the right, there's sort of a wider area, and we discussed with my engineer the potential of having additional parking spaces painted and identified in that area. A lot of what's happened over the past year, this is a very unique situation with Highway 97 getting reconstructed, and they are adding a bike lane on the south side, and they've identified this area as the low point of the road, and they know they need stormwater ponding. I own the east side of Forest Road as well, and they've suggested that property is likely a need for the Highway 97 project as well. So it's been a little bit of a chicken and egg game between MinDOT and the watershed, because there is a wetland. I have submitted a wetland mitigation plan that's way down the road with the watershed, and they're essentially waiting for the city to approve a site plan review, and MinDOT to ultimately approve the design, and the wetland is ready to go. Army Corps has already acknowledged everything, they are on board with the project. So hopefully, MinDOT will have this line for us that identifies something I need to stay south of with it, with this project. When I initially bought the property, there was a much grander plan, I ha, I have drawings of a building on the east side of Forest Road, and three buildings on the west side, and there were parking, and as more and more information became available, it kind of whittled down to a single building, and hopefully two, but it's really gonna depend on MinDOT. It, it's, it's possible this building will need to be shifted and, and potentially turned a little bit, but it, it is what it is, and the, the size is what I'm looking for, and the project is what I'm looking to do.
Commissioners, questions? Susan?
There is, there's a huge market for this, and, and I think this is a great thing to come to Forest Lake, I just, you know, gotta make sure everything fits in here. Where are you planning on snow storage? Because I doubt the watershed district really wants you dumping all the snow from the site in that, that little oval wetland-y thingy.
Well, I mean, the, my engineer has done all the calculations to determine, that stormwater pond is only for my property, it's not for anything else. And, and there is adequate space on that western side for snow storage. We've also, you can't see it very well, but the entire north side of the building pads is a swale that drains to the stormwater pond, and so that's another potential area for snow storage.
The north side of the building? How are you gonna get there?
Well, on the, where the...
It's not paved.
Do you see where the pavement goes north along the west side of the building?
Yeah.
That, that essentially leads right to this swale, and so there's a, there's a little corner in there, you know, if need be, snow might need to be hauled away, but the, you, I, my engineer believes that there's adequate space and, and we can accommodate snow.
Because the site's gonna drain to your building.
It, it drains to the northwest.
Yeah, I mean, through your building, so that, you, you're figuring that out. I said, I, I do believe that there's a, a real need for this, I'm, I'm worried about the parking. Every roofer I know has four guys leave their facility in a truck, and most of them come in a car of their own. So that's, that, parking could be a, a challenge for you. It is going to be important that as you plan your landscaping, that you do include irrigation. We have learned that, yes, we are a land of 10,000 lakes, but plants in the summer here need irrigation, if they're gonna, if they're gonna grow and thrive.
Yep, and I'm, I'm in favor of the irrigation as well as the fire hydrant within the site.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Don?
This is Don Steeler. Since you can't put mechanical units on the roof, you're, you're gonna need mechanical units. I saw in your photographs of a similar building, air conditioning units out on a curb on the side, is that what you intend to do?
Yep, li, likely on the west side of, of the building, there, there would be a spot identified by the HVAC contractor, and it would be a concrete pad, like, like that picture shows. I think that was in there, maybe that. But they would be on the ground.
Yep, okay.
Other question?
No, that's, that's all I had, I just wanted to confirm that that's what we were gonna look at.
Paul Gerard. MinDOT seems to be kind of the sticky wicket here, as they say. You're gonna be able to work it all out, you're comfortable that they're gonna do you well?
Yeah, we've, we've had conference calls with MinDOT, a couple of them to this point, and they've shared exhibits, we've had conversations back and forth about the, they identify it as a need for their project. They've been pretty clear in saying they are, will be taking some of my property, and I understand how that works, and it's not the design team that does the taking of the property, but we've, we've communicated well, and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Other questions, the applicant? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, just thank you for everything, and we enjoyed working with Ken and the staff, and looking forward to moving, moving ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Commissioners, conversation, discussion, motions? All of the above. Ms. Young?
Ken? Would it be possible for us to add, add a condition 19, make what you have now as 18 into 19, and for 18, state that all outside storage shall be consistent with the underlying zoning and of, of the property and adhere to the zoning code?
Yeah, something to that.
Other commissioners, is that something that you would be amenable to?
That would be my expectation.
But there's a comfort level putting it in the record.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Other comments, questions, concerns, discussion? Chair's looking for a motion? Commissioner Young?
Susan Young, I move approval of the resolution with the, with the conditions in the staff report, a condition, a new condition 18, which would state that all outdoor storage of equipment, vehicles and materials shall be in full compliance with the, with the zoning, the underlying zoning of the property and the zoning code that relates to that underlying zoning, with the current 18 to become condition 19.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Justin Brink, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to add the nine attachments to the motion?
No.
No?
No. They, the, just for clarity, the condition one references all the project plans...
Okay.
...which are part of the attachments. If I may, Mr. Chair, I wrote down maybe a condensed version of what Ms. Young was proposing.
That'd be fine.
Well, I just, I wanted to make sure, I don't wanna cut her short here, I just wrote down, any outdoor storage shall meet the standards and requirements of the city's zoning code.
Okay.
Does that cover it?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, I, I didn't mention that you wanted to approve a resolution. I thought it was just the conditions? Or did I miss that?
Well, what...
She moved the resolution.
I moved the resolution.
With the addition.
With the, with the change.
My mistake.
Would you prefer that I withdraw that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, 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 I, I was expecting to hear the 11-08 today.
Oh, I apologize.
No, you're fine. I just was, I was keyed in on one set of numbers and didn't hear them. My wife says the same thing, I could listen better. Any other discussion? Hearing none?
And Mr. Chair, there was a second?
Yes.
Justin, okay, thank you.
Call a question, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to Forest Lake, we wish you the best of luck on your project, hoping it goes smooth.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you.
We'll move on to item seven, discussion. Ken, we'll start with you.
Oh, thank you. Just as a reminder, we will not have a second meeting in November for the planning commission, that's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I didn't think anybody...
You weren't gonna give us Thanksgiving that evening?
Turkey and gravy, bring it in for Wednesday night dinner, you'd be... We have one meeting scheduled for December, I don't have the date in front of me. I would say at this point, we're about 50/50 that we'll have that. Don't have any new applications, burning a hole in our workload right at the moment, unless we get, going on some zoning code amendments, which I don't know if we'll be ready for those or not. And then there's no second meeting in December as well because of Christmas. Again, apologize for no internet, but that's really out of the city's control, we muddled through today. The fibers get cut, we just have to grin and bear it.
Questions for Ken?
I don't, you know, I was just trying, I don't know of any other, other, see, the County Environmental Center construction has started. Hidden Creek subdivision is moving along, they're still trying to get a road in so they can get a couple of model homes started before Christmas for the spring parade, they're cutting it right close, but fortunately now, if it stays dry and warm this next week, they might, might make it. Mr. Carwash notified the city that they couldn't find the general contractor, so they're gonna probably start that in the spring. It's still, it's all approved, they just, they can get every little duck in a row to start the swallowing. Doing utility work in December, I don't think would be very fun, so I just think it's wise to wait. That's, that's a quick summary of what I know.
Okay, questions for Ken?
Well, Ms. Young had her hand up. No? Susan?
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Young, Ken, which company have you got doing the zoning regs, and what's their progress to date?
I, well, our first step, I'll, I'll back it up a little bit, we are looking at, what we are starting with is looking at all the various permitted and conditional and interim uses in all the zoning districts. And they put together a big spreadsheet of all these uses, all the zoning districts, and our goal is to try to clarify, condense, simplify that, so it's more both manageable for staffing, manageable for commissioners, manageable for applicants and property owners. They've completed that step one of looking at that, and we're going to have a meeting with them next week to go through, where are some ways we can improve this, condense this, make it better. It's MSA Consultants, I believe is the firm doing the work, out of Roseville, I think they're located in. So we'll, we'll know more then. So that's step one, and then from there, it'll evolve into... I, I, I'm not exactly sure where it's gonna go, but we're, that's, our first goal is to try to, especially for Abby and I, to get our hands wrapped around, what do we got with this big monster, and how can we make it work better for everybody?
I just remembered that they were under contract several months ago, and I was just wondering how things were going.
Slowly.
Though there aren't very many billable hours in that yet.
No.
Other questions for Ken? Hearing none? Kevin, anything?
Nothing for me.
Justin?
No, sir.
Susan?
Those of you that know runners or are runners, we have a turkey trot coming up in the city on Thanksgiving morning, it will be a funding for Rangers Helping Rangers.
Is that a 5K?
It is a 5K, timed.
But you can walk if you want, right?
You can, you can walk it if you wish, but last year, last couple of years, we've had folks asking for it to be timed.
All right.
Brief commercial announcement.
Jeff?
No, sir, I'm good.
Don?
No.
I have nothing else. So with that, the chair's looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don Steeler will make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Jeff Larson will second it.
I have a motion in a second, it's a non-abatable motion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your service tonight, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, hopefully we'll see you in December.